But it's like Denise.
What?
It feels like.
Yes, yes.
And then have to regurgitate them or like.
Bill said, I don't have to come, but I'm available if you need me. He said, I don't want to step on anybody's toes.
I don't know, Bob has like a gazillion things he wants to cover, all of which are awesome. It just feels like.
This is a background.
See what his thoughts are.
I need some help.
I'm here.
Pauline's not gonna be here until seven thirty, Andy's gonna miss most of the workshop, he wanted the goal, he wanted the workshop, Pauline wanted the workshop, Denise is gonna be late, no one emailed me anything. Like, what are we doing?
I'm ready to go, I'm ready to make a presentation on what I think are admirable, achievable goals for this council.
I think the issue is that not everyone's here to have that dialogue.
I don't care, I'm here and I'm prepared to speak.
Okay.
I've been.
I know, it's.
I've been practicing all day.
Yeah, that's a fucking lie, but that's why.
All right, I gotta show you, I gotta show you what I was doing today.
No, let's just.
I was playing with my new toy.
Thanks for being here.
You ready?
Yes.
Well, that's nice.
Oh, yes.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, why don't we go to the bar?
We're gonna go have a quick drink.
We're gonna go to the bar.
Yes, I'm ready for that, too.
Do you or you want to say something about Mr. Merrifield during New Business?
I was gonna do, but why don't you?
No, how about this, can you start with Bob?
Okay.
And with me, I knew, I got to really know Lyle because. When he has his maple syrup days, he usually buys extra maple syrup from another, so I would always be careful for him as well.
There was somebody else that I wanted to mention, too. I read the obituaries religiously.
And they were just like, cause he's a good artist.
That's a, that's a product of age.
He never paid ahead of time, they just said, yeah, Miles just paid.
Actually, I always did.
People that own his land, people that have caught his vegetables, they love him in Gorlinburg, they love him, I mean, he's like an icon there.
I think it was a heart attack? You know what happened?
Heart attack.
Poor guy, just took him right down.
That was it?
His mom's brother.
There was a guy in high school named Dickie Carl.
So, yeah, what I'll do is we'll just grab the going down the line, I'll pump to Bob.
Maybe same family.
I'll say that like tonight, we wanna pay our respects to.
Bob, is that's the only I got comment on tonight?
Okay.
It's just that, so let Bob do it, and then I'll just piggyback off the end of that.
Okay, cool.
So you're talking about Pete's dad, so he, do you know his uncle?
Who are we talking about?
His uncle, his dad, is the bunker, was Jay and.
No kidding.
Mystical, and they can watch it back. Keep moving forward, cause if we were scheduled at that, it's another hour of our time.
Small world, cause I was interviewing Pete Hickmore for the Keith position. We just got chatting about some things later on, he's like, oh, come on, come on, I love this year, it's like, yeah, my dad passed away, cause he drowned in Casco Bay, I was like, Jesus, what year was that? Was you with Andrew Bunker? He knocked his skull over, he said, yeah, he was, I'm like, I'm really glad I get to meet you. Like, holy cow.
I was ten years old, the day that.
And that's my concern, it's like the optics of it, but then at the same time, it's like.
I was on the front lawn, waved at him, I got, we just. But then he, missing next morning.
We're not doing the run, let's just, Bob's right, let's go.
And Michael was a swim coach.
I didn't know that.
Yes.
He's one of the best golfers. One of the main, one of the main, uh, pro-am, like.
Come, at the table.
Okay, all right, let's go have a group hug.
Oh, wait, but our group is.
All right, let's just have an individual hug.
This is in the knee, um, couldn't swim, could not swim. He was, what was it, coming back doing the dinghy?
All right, sorry, you gotta go back to Bunker.
Sorry, sorry, can I get a couple?
If we're gonna report it, rather than having another meeting, all right.
We'll have to do it on the next.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry, none of you.
Tig, do you wanna go over anything else?
Legs are still sore a little bit. I did a CrossFit class with Amy on Friday, and. I've been walking like a cowboy since. Day three. Yeah, I should be fully functional, I looked like I was. Pig leg Pete running this morning on Forest Lake Road.
Full-time job.
Better than Saturday.
Pardon?
Have a fucking full-time job, conservative, like.
Yeah.
Well, your husband told me you don't work, but that's.
Definitely.
It's probably true, I kinda don't really work, it's like a fake job.
We, Bob, Bob has a lot he wants to talk about, out of respect for Bob, we do it, and then they can listen to the meeting, and.
Yeah, it was a good day.
And the four of us, we wanna just discuss something else, I don't care what it is.
Yep, that's it.
You lead, you lead, and just.
Bob, you wanna go through your stuff, yeah?
Where are you gonna go for that?
You wanna go through your rolls?
Let's just go through the agenda, and then.
I'm ready.
Okay, Bob's ready.
If they have questions, or whatever.
Yeah, that was at a six A M. class, well, that was a little rough.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, it is six oh seven, we are gonna get a wiggle on, this is, what day is today, today is Monday, September ninth, this is a Town Council Caucus Part Two, where the councilors who are present are going to do a deep dive into some of the goals we have for the upcoming year. I'd like to note that we had a Council Caucus Part One, where we reviewed the larger goals that are kind of in play, including things like the comprehensive plan, and the Route one hundred roundabout, and the revaluation, those are not, not really like big projects, are they, kind of small, you know, low level of effort, right? But tonight, we wanted the opportunity to take kind of a deeper dive into what those goals are for the year, so, Mr. Vale, I know, has some very exciting things he would like to tackle, and I can't wait to hear what your thoughts are, and what you've got.
All right.
You'd like to achieve.
I have a lot of things that I'd like to achieve.
Let's hear it, Bob.
So, we got, we got hammered here back this past spring on a housing proposal with a Westbrook Housing Authority, and I took some notes, not much of it got to paper, but most of it got landed right there, and so I got thinking, I said, all right, it's time to get back up to bat, it's time to get off the canvas and go another round, any type of metaphor you'd like to use, but I've decided that I think we're ready to have another, another go at it. So, I've looked at the piece of property down on Styles Way, and I've, I've come up with a working idea, it's not ready for draft yet, but it's, it's, it's beginning to put some meat on the bones, and what I'm thinking of proposing, and we will get back with a, a, a picture, if you will, there's a word for that, but, an artist's rendering of what I think it should look like. I'm thinking of ten buildings, approximately five thousand square feet each building, I'm thinking that there would be three two-bedroom apartments, and three one-bedroom apartments in each unit, so a total of sixty units, this would be workforce housing, in conjunction with that, I'm looking at a train station and a bus drop-off, and in that train station, I envision maybe one or two shops, or one or two businesses, or one or two somethings, so I'm, I'm throwing these things out because what I'm looking for is to, all of us to come back together and throw more darts at the wall.
Yeah, can I throw darts, can we chat about it, are we gonna go through all of yours first?
No, let's talk about it.
Oh, all right, I was on a roll here, but I'll, I can stop.
No, I agree with Bailey, let's talk about that, Bob, and Bailey, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I think, one, I am a huge proponent of affordable housing, so I love the idea, I think, you know, I've mentioned this to Tig and to the town manager as well, I think doing a little like pre-work would be in our best interest, in the sense of like getting a idea from some of our community stakeholders that had a tough time with our initial proposal in a room, and just getting an understanding of what kind of got us to that point, right? Some of the feedback, feedback I heard from that initial proposal was, the size was too big, the location wasn't right, you know, I, some of the other ones are slipping my mind right now, but I think it would be good to get a good understanding of what kind of drives what a successful affordable housing project looks like to some of our community members, and then I think we work backwards from there, because I agree with you, that vision sounds lovely, and I'm, I think there's a lot of value in adding retail space to a lower, below, beneath the housing, because then it's also an opportunity for some folks that are living there to have other job opportunities, and also drives the kind of, some of the struggles we have from a tax-based perspective, having other businesses in the community, so I think it achieves a lot of different things, we're providing housing, we're providing, broadening our tax base in some fashion, and then also, kind of like full circle, folks that live there can also have the opportunity to work there if there's opportunities available, or whatever businesses are in there, but I think it would be helpful to understand, kind of, almost like a reset, to understand where the community sits on it, on the topic, that's my feedback.
There's nothing like putting a car out there for sale and letting the buyers look at it.
Bob, on the initial throw-out of the idea, I think it's a great idea, on the initial throw-out, if I oppose it, it's for a couple reasons, number one is, as I told you before, I'm really worried about us being able, municipality-wise, being able to expand, Styles Way's way gives us that expansion space, for, we don't, we may have to move town garage, maybe not in our lifetime, but at some point, for those of us that lived the salt shed, compost pad nightmare a few years ago, Bob, we had, we looked at Bruce Hill, the fairgrounds was gonna give us space behind all that, which would've been great for us, been out of the way, we had residents from all over, Bruce Hill, Blanchard Road, Mill Road, come up, and their first thing, well, it's manure, we're worried about rats, and, I mean, you're talking about putting housing right next to a compost pile. All right, and, and one last thing, Bob, I, I, I think we can get to, the apartments you're talking about, we can get there through letting, letting the private, letting people do that in their homes, let them, let them build an ADD, let them, you know, let, going up the center, if there's a lot, a big lot, let somebody split it, if they wanna be able to put, you know, some, like the condos next to RISE, we can do it through private, and I, and I'm all favorite, Bob, I, but the concept, I get it, I'm just worried about the logistics of doing it, but I commend you, Bob, for thinking forward on that.
Let me, let me talk about the logistics just a little bit.
Yes.
So, this, this project would be this side of the stream bed, of the brush dump, and the compost piles, and the orchard, and that sort of thing, I believe that we would be taking up less than half of the available real estate, one of the things that I think is a beautiful thing, or a good thing, is that we would, my proposal was that we would act as our own general contractor, and by keeping it as a six units per building, and it's a scale which we, we would finance, we would hold a note, we would act as a general contractor, we would borrow against the income from the TIF, we would turn it over to the Cumberland Housing Authority to run it, so, we would not have, we would not be running up against, oh, this is not for our people, this is for outsiders, we wouldn't have that problem, the other thing that we would have is that the scale of these buildings, we could put them out to bid, we, we as, we as acting of the town, actors as a general contractor, can go out and bid for the whole project, we can look at various site work contractors, we can look at various concrete contractors, various building contractors, we can negotiate the product, the prices, the materials on our own, and we can offer up ten buildings to, say, ten different contractors, and say, we want you to construct a building, we can, you know, we can get into the weeds as much as we like, by doing so, there's a word for that, we've used at the school a lot, where we hire a, a builder's rep, an owner's rep to run that through, so I think the opportunity for us to have a project where we own it, we run it, we set the rates, the market rates, below market rate, or at market rate, but I think the opportunity for us to have a project that will provide, say, for now, sixty units of affordable workforce housing is worth us taking town to the next step.
I promise you a wide open mind on it, Bob, I do, I promise you open mind on it.
The train station, is that, would you anticipate that we would finance that, or?
We would finance it, my proposal is that we would, we would use.
We wouldn't get any support.
District number one to finance a bond, where, I believe there's some state and federal money that will help us, we have a meeting tomorrow, late afternoon, to see if there are some funds available for the train and bus piece of it, so, this is a, it's a working idea, and if you all humor me for a little bit longer, till I have something to, concrete to provide you, but I think the idea is a good idea.
I think, if I may, sir, young man, I think one of the things that I would like to be prepared for, and why I do like looking into this proactively, is that, I mean, we know that housing is a problem, like, what is it, eighty, what did we say, eighty thousand by twenty thirty, or sixty thousand by twenty thirty? Eighty thousand, right, units by twenty thirty, so, we're going into twenty twenty-five, and I'm not sure the state is close to achieving that goal, so, I wonder at one point if the state is going to intervene and say, okay, towns, you know, we told you about this need, we haven't moved the needle, at some point, you know, do we lose, or is there a possibility of losing home rule, and I am not at all trying to fear Bunker, but I'm saying that we should be thinking about this, because we may lose some of that flexibility, because we know that the problem is only becoming more dire, and a lot of these projects haven't been.
So, here we are doing something.
That's my point, so what, that's what I really like, and I think that the other side of that coin is being proactive with the extension of TIF one, because we know that obviously this is something the state is taking really seriously, if they've said that municipalities now have the option to extend their TIF districts, if seventy-five percent of that revenue goes to either affordable housing or transport, so, that's going to be, that's clearly a priority there, we should prepare for that accordingly as well, and so even if that's just hypothetical and sketch plans at this point, as we get the public feedback as well, because we do wanna be mindful of the seventy percent no on the Drowned Road project, I think this is a good way to do it, different location, you know, let's see what options are available to us, and I think that to Bailey's other point as well, not only talking to some of the folks that were vocal in their opposition, but it would also be good to bring in some of the folks that were in favor of the project, the church was a big proponent, kind of see Reverend Allison Smith, might be good to get some of the folks that did have an interest to see what their thoughts are on a, you know, hypothetical project as well, so.
Okay.
Back to you, Bob.
So, my, my next item, I don't mean to dominate the meeting, but I was asked to come to.
What's new, Bob?
I don't.
You, you weren't prepared.
Hit it, man.
So, the next thing that comes to mind is senior housing, and what are we going to do about transitional housing, I have a mother-in-law, and I'm acutely aware of the painful process of going from independent living to assisted living, to nursing care, to hospice care, and it's, it's, it is painful to watch, it's extraordinarily expensive, it takes anybody's life savings, and they evaporate just overnight, that being said, our project that we did with Bateman and Associates up on Drowned Road is a senior rental housing project, and I interact with a couple of those people, not daily, but on a regular basis, up to food stop, and I see some of them, and one of the things that I think about is, they're not there because their economics are, they're, they're there because they need that place to go, and so I think to myself, all right, where's their next stop? There's probably not a good answer, there's, you know, most of those people go on Main Care, Main Care, I can assure you, having just gone through this, is a bed that's available, and it doesn't matter where it is, they try to locate that bed, you know, in the area that you live in, but it may not be, and my wife and my brother-in-law looked at some places that had a bed available, and my wife came home, and she said, I would not put my dog here, much less my mother, you know, and, so, I'm looking at, thinking of two things, one, sitting down with the owners who run the people up there at Drowned Road facility, and ask them to lay out to us the square footage, and convert part of that, say, all right, there's going to be an acute need for these people, how can we help, can we, can we change part of this to assisted living, can we change part of this to continuum hospice and nursing care, and it may be that we might have to put up something also, so I also got, the other day, I was thinking, all right, we'll just, we'll take this building by eminent domain, but, you know, that, that raises a whole lot of other issues, so I'm not sure that that's the route to go, but, maybe we put an addition onto that building, or a, something that's close by, and I think that's worthy of our, it's a worthy goal to look at, some of these things that I'm throwing out here tonight aren't gonna happen overnight, but I think if we say, these are, these are goals for this community, these are things that are actual needs, we hear about, you know, you know, I can't afford my taxes, I can't afford, people are going to have to move at some point, some people are gonna age out of their homes, and they're gonna need someplace to go, and I think that it would be nice if the community, you know, I'd like to stay in my community, I'd like to stay in my own home, and I'd like to be carried out feet first, not all of us can do that, some of us have health issues, and any number of things, and, you know, but, as a goal for this council, senior, senior housing is something that we should be thinking strongly about. All right, I'm working my way up Title Road.
Can I, can I ask a question about that, is the existing building that's there, is your thought that it's like phase one, phase two, phase three, right, like, and so it's all just like phase one, you would say, right now?
Right.
So, and then the other component of it is, are you looking for it to be an affordable option for that, or are you just looking for it, us to have an option in the community for seniors who are in that phase of life, hospice care, or like whether it's that one, two, three?
I think we have to have the affordable piece of it, people that, people with money are going to Ocean View, and they've, that's, that's, there's a different plan for them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we have to, short answer is yes.
Okay. Just curious, I was just curious, sorry.
Is there any information, or could we maybe reach out? Or if we were trying to understand what state funding would look like, or what funding resources are available to us, is that something we could do? Because the affordability there probably is, right, if we're looking at affordable housing, but how does that bifurcate? And does it bifurcate from the nursing, especially if it's already, it's a developer that's a part of that project? Is it, are there hybrid models? Do they exist? Can we break the system? You know, what are, obviously, we need more information.
Yes, I know. I'm presenting what I think are high-level ideas.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't, the first one I've started to drill down to. The second one is really just a high-level idea.
Okay. Mr. Manager, could we find out if there are any municipalities, whether local to Maine, or maybe our New England neighbors, that have done anything kind of like this to help establish some kind of assisted living facility within their bounds? And kind of what models are available, and how they kind of went across from that? We can ask maybe G.P. Cognos, or?
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to do some outreach, to see what there are out there. I'll be going to the ICMA conference here shortly. Good opportunity to talk to a lot of people about that as a concept. It's a need that's coming quickly on the horizon. We have the largest single generation quickly advancing into that, into that segment of their life right now, and the need's going to be acute. And we have seen more of a retraction in that market than we have seen an expansion. Part of it's probably, you know, an employee, an employment challenge, one, finding enough staffing models for that, but, but, you know, you've seen a couple, a couple places have been converted into other facilities, but there are others that, you know, have, others that have found. I know Woodlands Memory Care has done a lot of that work across the state. They have multiple operations that they have, but they have, that's been from the private market versus, but there's no way that you could, or there's no reason to rule out a public-private partnership as a new model. And like, as Councilor Vail says, if you, if you look at that and expand it to your next generation from that, you could find, you know, like with the Drown Road property, with those operators there, that's a class, that's a good example of a private-public partnership. And then look at that and say, "Okay, well, this model works. How would you feel about getting into, involved with, you know, this other organization, but we're gonna..." You could have that party wall, so to speak, and your responsibility would be here, and their responsibility would be here going forward. So you could probably broker something along those lines as well. Be a question of making sure your land use ordinances were in agreement with that and lining that up, but you could incentivize that. So, but I'll, it's a long, long-winded response to, yes, I'll see what I can find out for additional thoughts or resources going forward.
Bob will be on it, too. One other comment.
Of that, I'm sure.
I do think there is a lot, and I will say this, Bob, I think there's a lot of value in, you know, when you're losing someone, right, when you're in that season of life, I think it's like, to be able to be in your own community and have the people around you, there's a lot of value in that. I'm not saying we need to build a full, massive, whatever, but I think when that time comes for a lot of people, I think there's just a gap in the market for, you know, the respect for that part of people's lives, right? So if we can create a more comfortable environment for someone to be able to go, have friends and family come visit in that community, I think there's a lot of value in that. So, yeah. Good thought, Bob.
Bob, the, the lawn care business is a cutthroat business. One of the guys I work with, his wife is the CEO of Maine's largest lawn care facility business. I think they own thirty, forty house, homes here in Maine. And she's the CEO, and she's soon to be part-owner of it. They're buying up assisted living, excuse me, they're buying up nursing homes and converting them to, and they, because it's a moneymaker. You know, I just, I think we have to think that, but listen, what I, I'd rather be here in town than I would someplace else. And I think that's important to a lot. And, you know, my priorities, like yours, on your last project, you mentioned this, is that Cumberland residents will get a first dib before everybody else. And that's not to say that there are other needs, but at that point, you want to, you want to be in your hometown, or you're in your town.
Yes, I think that's, I think that's very important.
Comment about that? If we want to be able to gatekeep who can stay there, then I don't think it would work with the affordable model, correct? Because if you're getting federal funding to make it affordable, you can't discriminate on that basis.
It would, go ahead.
No.
Explain.
We would not, we would not, we would not move forward unless it was a project that we could control.
Okay. I have a couple other comments, just in general of what you're saying, because I was just like waiting, I was compiling them all. About the Styles Way, I think, which I know it's a general idea, I think studios would be valuable, and even potentially like town-owned use, like in an area for transitional housing like you're talking about, like, you know, your mother-in-law has sold her house, she has nowhere to rent, because there's nowhere to rent around here for seniors, but she, you know, is downsizing, wants to stay in town and rent just for a few months until she can find something she can afford to buy. I know people are running into that a lot, and they don't need a, you know, not even necessarily need a one or two-bedroom, they just need a room, like a studio, or something like that. And same with like newly graduated high school kids. So I do like one- and two-bedroom idea, but I think we can even think smaller than that, and then have like multiple, like a little village, or something like that. And we're talking about, one subject that came up often about the Drown Road project was the lack of services for the people living there where they are living. So the mixed-use idea is great, and providing a service for the people living there, like whether it's small grocery or daycare, or some sort of thing that they could use, that they otherwise would need to find transportation into, you know, somewhere far away in order to access that, and like even like medical offices or something like that, I think would be valuable. And with transportation added to it, that would help as well. But I think your idea is kind of approaching it from like the comprehensive angle, and it's kind of addressing all the issues with the last project that were brought up. So I like that about it.
I look forward to input from everybody.
What's next?
Working up Tattle Road. I think it's critical for us to get a handle on solar, the addition to the solar field. I think the opportunity for us to provide power over to the apartments across the street and for future use, the costs will never be cheaper than what they are today. The, a kilowatt of solar is, is, it's not going to be, it's not going to go down in value. No matter how much the cost goes up, the kilowatt we produce is worth just as much. So it's a net, it's a net gain for the community.
I would, on top of that, not just for the Hawthorne Court, is that what you were?
Yes.
Thinking about? I was thinking also, the fire station's not on solar, library's not on solar, the dist, I mean, we don't control the school district by any means, but seeing what we can do to get everybody that's on, or that's impacted by the mill rate, or all of our facilities on solar, to your point, would be something I'd be very passionate about as well.
Okay.
Let's hook up to that grid.
All right.
Sun shining, okay. What's next, Bob?
I'm working up Blanchard Road. I've mentioned this to Matt, and I've mentioned this to a couple others, I would like to, I would like to help the farmers' club develop a farmers' market on their property, a real farmers' market.
Like, open all the time?
Four, five days a week.
That'd be cool. Kind of like a grocery store.
There's a hundred, there's a hundred members in the farmers' club, a hundred farmers, and they all produce something. And they all, they all like to want to sell it. But anyways, I think getting the farmers, the farmers' market that's here, and getting it moved up to the fairgrounds, I think is a, would be a great addition to the community. I'm not real, I don't have a lot of things to tell you, other than this is an idea that's been buzzing around in my head for a while. Bill Shane and I went and sat down with the farmers' club two, three years ago. They liked the idea. At the time, they said, "We don't have any money." So maybe we become their economic development partner and help them find some grant money, but I think at least explore the idea again.
Bob, if you, if you, Matt, I think it's a great idea. You, Matt, and I, once they get their feet back underneath them, I mean, we just lost a great man, and...
We're gonna have to wait on this.
With the fairs coming, the rest of racing season, but I don't think, you know, if we meet a small group together, I don't, I don't care, but meet with the who, what's, who's bringing the place forward, because Lyle would have been the first, because he was a real farmer.
Yes.
He was a real deal.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, I'd love to see, like Denise said, I'd love to see people in there all the time.
Yeah.
Be great, and what a spot. No parking issues, plenty of room to walk around, and it's got everything, I think, yeah.
I skipped Main Street.
Go back, go to it, Bob.
Oh, Denise, go ahead. You talked about it like you wanted to replace the current farmers' market. This would be both, right? Because they're two separate things, they would be, right?
Yes.
Okay, just double checking. It's a good idea. I'd go there and buy all my fresh stuff, if it was available, when I needed it. I think a lot of people would, too.
You down, Bob?
No.
No.
He's not.
Should we extend this two hours?
This is like, he gets the floor, because he was the only one that sent me all of his stuff in advance, so.
What's all this stuff, though? All these bullet points?
So, we've, we've seen vacancies, and the one that jumps out to me is the business down on Route Nine, down by the railroad tracks. And so what I think that, you know, we got a sign down on Tattle Road, this is a business-friendly town, or open for business, or something like that. And I thought about, you know, C.N. Brown is getting ready to sell their property up there. And I think we, as a council, need to be ready to be proactive. In other words, if, if we see an opportunity, or we see something that's going on, we should be, we should get engaged. I don't want to, I don't want to say any more than that, but, you know, if we, if there's a, if there's an opportunity for us to bring business to this town, whether it's us engaging with somebody who's selling their property, or whether there's a developer who has some interest in something, we should be, we should be talking.
Super vague, I have no idea what you're talking about. I think we've kind of thrown around, I know Bailey and I have thrown around, and at one point, I think Bill Shane was sort of acting a little bit as our Economic Development Director, right? But with the, with the assumed appropriation funds coming for the Route 100 development, I mean, maybe we want to start to think about, or that's kind of piggybacking off of what you're saying, is some kind of Economic Development Director that's looking at Route 100 as well. I mean, the entire town as a whole, right? But kind of doing some of that proactive outreach, is familiar with the zoning, understands the zoning, understands what type of community, or what type of businesses folks in the town want, right? Because we know from the comprehensive plan, folks don't want big-box stores, right? We're not bringing in Home Depot, fine, but we also know that folks do want, you know, to see more economic development, and they want to bring the right businesses there so we can have a positive impact on the mill rate. And, I don't know, is that, Matt, typically something that, I know some municipalities do have kind of an Economic Development Director, does that fall into like the town manager? Does that fall into the planning, or the, our new planner? Is it kind of a hybrid, or do you just typically like get someone that's totally focused on that, you know? Or there, is there, off the top of your head, are there any sort of best practices or thoughts that jump to mind not to put you on the spot?
No, that's fine, Madam Chair. No, I think oftentimes you'll find the manager in that role, will do it in a town of similar size. It's a challenge having the planner do that, because that planner is also, in many ways, one of the gatekeepers for who enters and who doesn't, who shall and who shall not pass to the planning board level.
That makes sense.
So you want them to be, you know, it sounds funny to say it like this, but you want your planner to be, for folks to think that they're all about development, while at the same time saying that they're completely opposed to development. So you know that they're doing their job honestly at that point. But on the management side of it, we're looking at trying, you know, from, from my role at least, I look at it and say, "Okay, the council has a stated goal of wanting to diversify the tax base, find the opportunities, find good clean, you know, lay out what you want to have, and then what does your, what does your zoning allow?" And then trying to find ways to help maximize that in concert with the council's calls. So there is a, there would be, in a sense, other duties as assigned from where I'm at, but at the same time, if I found something that, you know, if we needed some more horsepower, my recommendation would be to the council, say, "Well, we need to hire someone to help us through this short period of time," versus having one, like, a lot of similarly sized towns don't have an Economic Development Director, because it's quite often not enough for them to do. You could wear multiple hats, but you could contract with someone to help that as well. The other thought that comes to mind, too, you've got a comp plan upcoming. Route 100, the Route 100 corridor is prime for a review of what's, you know, looking at what the transformative change that's taking place there. I know Counselor Douglas, I shared with her an idea about forum-based zoning, which would provide some flexibility in that, in that zone, that could find, you know, like the conversation we were having at Ordinance Committee the other night, talking about, "Well, what about mixed-use that you'd want to have?" And say, "Okay, residential-commercial combo," and then looking at your setbacks and wanting to have, instead of all this parking in front of the building, perhaps looking at the parking in back of the building, things along those lines that make your streetscape more attractive, some of those types of different concepts, and then as well as the sizing and the uses kind of being more consistent with each other, or having also, but also having some flexibility, as long as the look is right, maybe you can have more flexible uses going into that space. So there's, there's some of that, that I think we'll end up having that conversation in the, in the closer term. But then, I do think once that rotary is in place, and Rusty Lantern gets in, and seventy-two new units are a half a mile up the street, all of a sudden, you've got some pretty big game changers that are, that are coming in there.
I do wonder if, I know it's, we're a little in a weird time from a budget-planning perspective, but like, part of me does wonder if having an independent Economic Development person come in would make sense, because I think, like, a lot of these things could fall under that umbrella, in the sense of like, the farmers' market, obviously, it's like not priority, but like, those changes allow for more revenue generation within the town, and I'm worried that the time, the timing of the comp plan, and like, the selling of whatever land is left over there is going to happen before, you know what I'm trying to say? Like, is the time, does the timeline up?
Like, the development of Route 100 is going to take off once the roundabout is approved, and then we're going to be piggy, or we're going to be playing catch-up?
Catch-up, yeah. And so then I wonder, right, the tax, we have a lot coming up, right? You know, there's a lot of concern about the revow, there's the school, new school coming down the pipeline, and it's like, you know, during our finance meeting this week, we'll talk about like, what is the loss we're trying to regain next year to, you know, not impact the tax base? So it's like, what can we be doing proactively? Yes, it's an investment to hire someone else, but the goal, right, is to capture that, that investment in other, you know, when you sell the land, and then you're developing it, and then there's more revenue being generated, which helps the tax base. But I'm worried we're going to... But I'm worried, we're gonna, to your point, be playing catch-up, I'm rambling, but just thinking, I need to think more about that. But I do wonder if, if hiring someone with that direct, like, let's get this done, let's hustle this along so that we make sure we're not missing the time.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think also, I mean, you're a busy guy and you also have some, we have some other big projects coming up too and, um, maybe it's, you know, we, we, it's October, right? We expect to find out Route 100 for sure.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to update, yeah. I spoke with Dale Doughty last week from Maine DOT and Dale's been one of our conduits on that. It could happen shortly, it could also be after the election, which is probably a little bit more...
Realistic.
Realistic, just because I think folks are waiting to see like multiple, multiple balls that are in the air when they finally settle down into, into where they're gonna be.
That's a good way to put it.
So, uh, but I think a lot of them, you know, there's a lot of projects that a lot of states and a lot of senators and congressmen have, have put in there for congressional designated spending projects that they wanna see out the door too. And then there's, uh, so I, we're, we're, we can see the finish line tape, it's just a question of, uh, how fast, uh, they let the road go, but we're in, in, in great shape for that, but it'll, it could be anywhere between the first of October or the first of January is what we're looking at, so. But I know it was in, it was a live item of discussion, uh, recently as well, cause I know, uh, there's a lot of interest across the country from those CDS projects that are, that are out there and they wanna get that money out, cause there are jobs and there's, you know, investment and there's a lot of things out there, they don't wanna let it languish. But we have a, a window to, to, you know, that they, once those funds have been allocated, there's a window within which that needs to be expended, so, uh, you don't wanna compress it too much at, at that time, so, um, there's that, uh, sitting out there, but really, we're ninety-nine percent of the way there.
Bailey, I don't wanna sound like you, uh, cause I'm...
No, it's fine.
Really, no, I, but, you know, unfortunately, past councils...
Yeah.
This council, we have given away...
I know.
All our commercial and, and we have Route 100, that's our last savior, but, you know, we, we took, uh, my hand was raised to approve the project down on Route One, all that housing, instead of leaving it for commercial, because we wanted instant gratification. We, we've got Route 100 left, we gave away Chase's, not gave, we didn't give away, but we decided to go with housing, Chase's Pit, which would have been like North Yarmouth, a perfect commercial, uh, non, non-chemical area for companies and we decided to go the housing room. So, so much of that, our commercial land is gone and I just, I, I'd like to think our planner, along with Matt, can, can do the job of pushing. I just, I just don't see, this isn't Route One in Falmouth or...
Yeah.
Yarmouth, I just don't, I mean, we got Helene talking about an auditor, we've got Fire Department asking for two more, two additional EMTs, this, um, and we got the school coming, I just, I, I just think we gotta watch.
Yes.
And all this is good stuff, so I don't want you to walk away thinking, "I'm just gonna, I, I'm just against it," but I'm not, I just, I would love to see, you know, the housing was, I'd love to see that businesses, I would love to see Route 100, but we, we put two housing lots on Morris, uh, developments on Morrison Hill. Good idea, great people live there, it's a, it's a, but we took that out of commercial and we put it.
Yeah.
I just...
And I don't know what the answer is, I think I'm just, I think, when I, when we start to talk about a lot of these things, right? Like Bob had mentioned, you know, the train station, like, that's gonna be another thing, right? And then if you do the affordable housing, I'm just thinking like, big picture strategy of this feels like we should have someone dedicated to it, to ensure that it's being executed the way and has the attention that we need. Because I think to Bob's point, when that lot comes up for sale, what's the dialogue, right? Where has it been, you know, and who's prior, being prioritizing what's happening there? Like in my mind, you know, I live on the corner right there and it's like there's a lot behind or across slash adjacent to Cop Motors that's for sale right now. It's like, should we be buying that? I'm not saying we should, but it's like, there should be someone that's looking at all of these real estate transactions to really be proactive in thinking about what is our long-term plan here. And I worry that we're just, time is passing, we're missing these opportunities, we're talking about how we should have done this, we should have done that. And I think if we had someone that was really truly dedicated, we'd get the product that we were looking for. And I think, yes, I'm not saying we should hire someone today, there needs to be a lot more top conversations surrounding it, but I think if we want things to look a certain way, be a certain way, achieve a certain result, we have to have someone that's really truly dedicated to that. That's just my thought, but...
You wonder if diversifying the tax base, or if you have someone who's, I mean, maybe they're not even full-time, but maybe someone who's part-time, that's their full job, like you would think that their salary would be offset by...
The increased tax revenue.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't know, that would be the ideal situation, you know what I mean?
Or like tenfold would be the goal, right?
Cause the, like, you're, I mean, you're right, the revow, the school, I mean, the goal is to bring down, right? Is to bring down the tax burden and so how, you know, especially with, with your other idea, we're talking about mixed use, right? Like possibly someone could help with that, go for it, sorry.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Hell, yeah.
You know, that's a problem. Part-time, I think there's a, we should look at this from a, a volunteer point of view, part-time point of view, full-time point of view, but I think, I think we should look at that. You know, and I, I'm not, that's not to say I don't discount what Mike has said, because that, there's some value there too, but, but I think, I think Bailey has keyed in on, on the, that this is a, this is a position that may be worthy of consideration.
Some, it's one of those things where it's like sometimes you have to spend a little bit of money to, it's, it's hard right out the gate, it's this, but like, it's gonna pay off, like solar. Yeah, it just, it's like getting through that cycle and you have, it's the same thing when we were talking about fire, it's like you have to have the runway, like it takes six months to hire someone, it takes six months for them to get up to speeds, you look, you're looking a year out, right? If we were hiring for someone today. So it's like, there's, I don't know, just a lot of thoughts in my head. Anyway, sorry, Denise.
Kessler Thurston.
Sorry. Regarding giving away commercial, I agree, um, in hindsight, not great. With the comp plan, I think it would be great for us to look or them to look really objectively on where in town we can rezone for mixed use or even some areas, commercial or, I mean, there's plots of land behind my house that are zone industrial, um, but, um, they never decided to do anything with it, um, but it's available at least and really looking at where people would want little businesses around where they would use it and just kind of rethink all of it potentially, um, cause unless you're making more opportunities for commercial through, you know, land use and zoning, we're just gonna keep losing it or, eh, eh, we're not generating the ability for it to be there because we're not looking at zoning, so, yeah.
Bobby, you asked for, you asked for an inventory of agribable land, which we got, it was great. I'd hate to see what an inventory of commercial land would look like right now. I, I don't, it's, I don't think it's that big, I mean, I think, I mean, Route One's pretty much full, um, 100's available, but I, I don't, I don't know what's out there.
East of Middle Road.
A little bit of it, yeah, yeah.
I had an illegal lemonade stand on Main Street a couple weeks ago, my shoulder.
Was that, no, one more time.
I had an illegal lemonade stand with my children on Main Street a couple of weeks ago.
Did anybody stop?
We made, a Roddy cop stopped, um, with his big wrecker, I think we made a hundred and twenty bucks, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it was great.
But I think the point, like to what kinda Denise, I think you were alluding to too, is like, there's more to just like land, it's right, right? It's like tracking just, you know, traffic patterns and...
Right.
Needs, what are the needs in the community? What are the, the wants? What are the, you know, how can we diversify what we are providing to the community? And I think like that takes someone really dedicating time to that, like whereas I feel like with Matt, it's very much like these are, you know, kind of larger project things that we're focused on or maybe that's, I don't know.
Also, another part to that was, we've talked in the past about reaching out to landowners as far as splitting lots for things like that. Like also reach out to landowners, see, would you be willing to, you know, turn this commercial or something, you know, like talk to a developer about maybe adding a, a little business here and there that people would use, I don't know. So I think that could be part of it as well.
We've got a few minutes before we, oh, yeah, please.
A couple other thoughts, if it, if it'd be helpful as well, um, and this is a bit outside of the, the packaging, uh, perhaps having a discussion, looking at hiring a commercial broker or a brokerage firm to, to look at that and explore opportunities, cause they have a book of business, right? That they're, that they're looking at and say, "Okay, well, if you had, you know, X, Y, Z commercial brokers come in and say, 'Well, we know we have for, we know we have for inventory,'" you know, like, uh, Councilor Edson said on, uh, inventory of your commercial land, what's available and then try to match them up with who they may have. That may be one more cost-effective way to do that than having someone on the payroll, cause then you're in a...
Yeah.
A relationship of, of, of a commission-based, uh, approach, that may be a, a one creative way to look at that. Um, the other thing that comes to mind is, you know, we've seen commercials slow down considerably over the past twelve months. Rock Row was really rolling and then it really kinda slowed down, so there's, you've got the availability of financing, the, the, the cost of financing and some of that demand that has kind of moderated or slowed down for a bit of time. So we may have the opportunity, at least from the market-based side of it, to say, you know, you might have some time to do what you need to do. The other thing, and, and to Councilor Vales thought as well about like trying to look at opportunities, you know, there's a big yellow bullseye sitting on Route 100 right now that's completely unconstructed that the town could say, "Okay, let's take a position on that and, and talk to the bank who owns it and say..."
Right.
"You know, let's buy that and find someone to work together and then look at perhaps changing the zoning to a mixed-use commercial and find someone who wants to do a commercial residential component and say, you know, that, that's just, you know, it's, it's kinda partially built, we could make a difference on that side of it too and looking at other opportunities." So that's just a couple of things that just kinda jumped out of my page.
Some great ideas from our town manager.
Three-minute recess.
We're gonna take a three-minute recess and then get a wiggle on.
Wiggle over, thank you.
Okay, what does it mean?
Three-minute wiggle.